Just to give you a heads up, in case you're looking forward, we're starting on Article 31 tonight. But the following articles I won't read in their entirety. 32, which is a bylaw amendment, stretch energy code. 33, the solar array zoning. Article 36, a temporary moratorium on zoning for recreational marijuana. 37, special permit used for recreational marijuana. 38, I won't read in its entirety. There are changes to the charter involving water commissioners and their new role as wastewater as well. 39, membership of town-appointed boards. There's quite a chart in that article. I'm not going to read it all. Article 41 lists a series of liquor licenses that are proposed to go from seasonal to year-round. And Article 50, which is CPA items under 50,000. There's a chart in that one. I'm not going to be reading in its entirety. And finally, Article 64, which is a list of revolving accounts. I'm not going to read all the revolving accounts, so if you are here on one of those, I encourage you to look forward and take a look through Article 64 before I get there. All of the others, we'll read in our customary fashion, as we do. So again, cell phones off, pagers off, except for emergency personnel. We will be running the transcript screen and the motions will try and keep on the screen to my right. I've already talked about your voter card. And so with that, I'll declare quorum is present, and we'll start with Article 31. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute an amendment to the agreement between the towns of Chatham and Harwich with respect to the formation of a regional school district and to act fully thereon. Do we have a positive motion on this article? Anyone have a positive motion on this article? Hearing none, Mr. Brown.
I move this article being indefinitely postponed.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 31 be indefinitely postponed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of indefinite postponement so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The article's indefinitely postponed. Article 32. See if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Harwich under the general bylaws by adding a new bylaw under Chapter 115, stretch energy code, for the purpose of regulating the design and construction of buildings for the effective use of energy pursuant to Appendix 115AA of the Massachusetts Building Code 780CMR, the stretch energy code, including future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto, with an effective date of January 1, 2019, copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Mr. Brown.
I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 32 be accepted and adopted as printed in your warrant. Is there any debate? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Cole, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you.
That's quite all right. My name is Larry Cole. I reside at Three Parsons Path, which are going to have solar panels installed tomorrow. And I'm the chairman of the Harwich Energy Committee. And what I'd like to do is just very briefly give you some Green Communities background, then speak specifically to this article. And the second article will be spoken to by my committee colleague Valerie Bell. First, Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I'd like to correct the factual error that I made last evening talking about the capital plan.
I really don't want to go back to last night.
No, I don't want to.
It was a good night. We got a lot done, but there's no need.
Okay.
Nor do I want to go back and have people correct errors and things they said.
Well, can I just say that Leo was correct, and I'm one that's six years out of date.
Okay. You got it in, Larry.
Thank you.[266.12][266.12](Laughter). Massachusetts has legislatively established emission targets reduction for some years in the future, and there are various measures being taken to achieve that. One of those is to mandate that the utilities buy a certain percentage of renewable energy. For those of us who are Cape-like compact customers, all of our energy is renewable. In addition, you know that the state is trying to import hydroelectric power from Quebec. In addition, the state mandates that utilities and providers like the compact carry out energy efficiency programs, which we pay for at a charge of about 2.109 cents per kilowatt-hour on our monthly bills. In addition, there is the Green Communities program. The town of Harwich is pursuing being designated as a Green Community for a couple of reasons. One is that it's the right thing to do, to participate in the emissions reduction. More practically, it makes us eligible to receive grants from the state to do things that will reduce our energy usage, which in turn reduces expenses on energy. So the state is providing money to help us reduce expenses. No, there's no free lunch. That funding of the grants comes from payments made by retail suppliers. And of course, it gets passed on to customers eventually, like everything else. Anyway, those grants, and the estimates are that the initial general grant that we would be eligible for would be approximately $160,000. After that, there are competitive grants that we can apply for that would help us purchase fuel-efficient vehicles. Now, the kinds of things that can be paid for with the Green Communities' grant money are things that are not covered by the Cape-like compact energy efficiency program, which we've taken a lot of advantage of, including lighting, fixtures, and other things in the town. So, in order to be designated as a Green Community, there are five criteria that we have to satisfy. Two of those require votes this evening, so that's Article 32 and 33. So the first one, Article 32, is a general bylaw, requires a simple majority, and if you approve it, we adopt what's called the stretch energy code. The stretch energy code requires that buildings be built more energy efficient. It applies to all new home construction, but not to additions in renovations. It applies to commercial construction of over 100,000 square feet, and it also applies to some specific commercial enterprises that use a lot of electricity for refrigeration or what have you. Years ago, when this program began, I was a selectman, and there were colleagues who were concerned about the stretch energy code adding too much to the construction of homes. The gap between the base energy code and the stretch energy code has narrowed significantly, so today, it's relatively minor. There is a numerical example on the Department of Energy Research Green Communities' website that calculates what the costs, additional costs are of being energy efficient at the Green Community standard of building a 2,550-foot, square-foot home. It adds about $2,600, of which $1,600 is eligible for a utility rebate. The energy savings are estimated to be $475. Do the arithmetic. In the third year, you have a positive cash flow. So it will pay for itself. Now, whereas the base energy code, that base construction code tells you what to do, it's prescriptive. It says things like stair risers have to be a certain number of inches, there have to be electrical outlets at various places in your home. The stretch energy code is performance-based. You have to attain a target called the home energy... Yeah. I'm hanging up here. H-E-R-S. Help me, somebody.
(Inaudible).
Yes. Home Energy Rating System. Thank you. You have to reach a target of 55. But you don't have to do it any particular way. It absolutely is not necessary to build a house that is too tight to breathe. The nonsense you heard from Falmouth is wrong. HVAC, the V in it stands for ventilation, not voodoo. Ventilation can be engineered. It can be... So there is no requirement that you make the home too tight. Okay. That's about all I want to say about the stretch code. If you have technical questions, we have the town planner in the room who has been through this in the town of Truro. We have the building commissioner, Mr. Chesley, who is intimately acquainted with the codes. And if you have further questions, we have a representative here for the southeast district of the Green Communities Program for the Department of Energy Resources. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Further debate on the motion under Article 32? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
It is a vote. Article 33. And this is one I indicated I'm not reading in its entirety. This is a proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw to establish a new large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic array district within the zoning bylaw itself. Mr. Brown.
I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
The motion is to accept and adopt the Article 33 as printed in the warrant. I'll now go to Mr. Brophy, the chairman of the planning board, for the planning board report and recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would note that at a duly posted and noticed public meeting held by the Harwich Planning Board on March 27, 2018, the board voted unanimously to accept and recommend a large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic arrays zoning amendment, as it appears in the annual town meeting warrant. Public input was received in support of this amendment.
I have a copy, so I'm all set. Thank you. Any further debate on this article? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Valerie Bell from Route 28, Harwich Port, and I'm on the Energy Committee. And this is the second article that needs town meeting support for us to pursue the Green Communities program. And the map is up on the wall. This piece of property will be zoned for an extension of a photovoltaic. It's right next door to our existing solar farm. And it's a requirement by the Green Communities that we set aside a place in our town that is zoned to promote renewable energy. And so that's where it is. And if, in the future, anybody wanted to develop it as a solar farm, we have the location already zoned.
Further debate? Yes?
Linda Salmon, Shore Drive. I was just wondering if they could explain the "as-of-right" citing clause there to me.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Which clause?
The "as-of-right" citing, 325-139, definitions, on page 36.
Yes.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I'm Charlene Greenhough, the town planner. I am not a town resident.
Any objection to hearing from our town planner? Hearing none? Ms. Greenhough.
That was great.[837.43][837.43](Laughter). What the "by right" citing means is that it would not require a use special permit. However, it does still require an extensive review by the planning board, who would be the review authority for this particular project. It's not a use special permit, but it would require an extensive review, and the bylaw is as long as it is because that goes through all the requirements that they would have to meet in order to be approved for that location.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 33? Looks like you're ready to vote. It's a zoning bylaw amendment, requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no? It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 34. See if the town will vote to amend the town's zoning bylaw, Article 5 Use Regulations, Section 35-10, prohibited uses in all zoning districts, to include a new paragraph K that would provide as follows, and further amend Article 325-2 word uses and definitions to include marijuana establishments as follows. Again, I indicated I would not read this entire article. Mr. Brown.
I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
The motion under Article 34 is accept and adopt as printed in the warrant. Again, this is a proposed prohibition on marijuana establishments in the zoning bylaw. It would require a two-thirds majority to pass. I'll recognize Mr. Brophy for the planning board report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, at a duly posted and noticed public meeting held by the Harwich Planning Board on January 23, 2018, the board voted unanimously to accept and recommend the marijuana establishment ban zoning amendment, as it appears in the annual town meeting warrant. Public input was received in support of this amendment.
I've got one. Thank you. Further debate? Yes, sir?
Yes. Sebastian Mudry, 5-Horse Smith Street, West Harwich. This article, 34, and the following, 35, are bans. They are killer articles. They're inconsistent also with 37, which is coming up later.
Any further debate? Yes, chief?
Mr. Moderator, Dave Gilmet, Chief of Police. I'm not a voter in town here.
Any objection to hearing from the chief on this article? Hearing none? Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think just for the benefit of everyone, maybe just a quick review of what got us here tonight. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts in November of 2016 passed a ballot initiative legalizing recreational marijuana across the Commonwealth. The town of Harwich voted against that legalization. However, as you all know, it became legal anyway because it passed statewide. There were a number of other Cape communities that also voted against legalization. I stood before you last year at this time requesting your support for a temporary moratorium on retail sales and marijuana establishments in this community because the law, as it was written, had an awful lot of confusion surrounding it. And it called for the creation of a cannabis control commission that had not been created. It alluded to regulations and licensing, and there are a number of questions from all over the state as to how communities could deal with this issue. Did we have to have retail sales and marijuana establishments? Was there a process that we could use to prevent them from coming to our community or regulate them in some way, or zone them in some way? So the answer was a temporary moratorium to give us time, give everybody time to look at it and look at the issue, and then come back this year once all that other regulation was fleshed out. So following that, the months that followed that Maytown meeting we had last year, we saw the legislature amend the law a couple different times. And there was a lot of clarification that occurred as far as the process for preventing recreational marijuana at the local level, and the Cannabis Control Commission was created. And they just recently released regulations, marijuana regulations, for the marijuana industry. What I didn't see during that process, what I didn't see leading up to it, was any clear and convincing evidence that retail sales and marijuana establishments in a community are a great idea. Quite the contrary, in fact. There is plenty of clear and convincing evidence from other states who have been at it much longer than Massachusetts that point to the fact that it's quite a bad idea. Now, I don't intend to stand up here and rail against the evils of marijuana for you, okay? I think you can probably gather my opinion as, you know, a law enforcement officer for the past 31 years. However, I think there are some basic facts, common sense, basic facts about this issue that we can all agree with, and the implications and potential negative implications from those facts. So just a few examples. Allowing retail sales in this community would just by its very nature increase the availability of marijuana and THC derivatives. What I mean by that is not just marijuana in leaf form, marijuana concentrates, marijuana edibles, okay? All of these would be much more readily available to people 21 years of age or older. Now, I say that, right? But do people under 21 get hold of tobacco? Do people under 21 get hold of alcohol? Yes, on a regular basis. So that's what's going to happen here. If the community allows retail sales, it will become readily available, and it will fall into the hands of our youth. There's no question that's going to occur. If that does occur, that's a problem because there is clear and convincing evidence now, scientifically, that increased youth, increased use by young people, young adults, adolescents, the youth of our community, okay, can actually change the chemistry of their brain and predispose them to addiction of other substances, like alcohol, like opioids. Now, when I say opioids, everybody understands what I mean, right? That's because we are in the throes of a opioid epidemic. So it's completely and utterly defying common sense to me that we would want to allow retail sales of another mind-altering drug in a community that is going to predispose our youth to addiction when, in the last four months, three people have died in this community from opioid addiction. That doesn't make any sense to me. Some other examples. And before I get to the other examples, I just want to point out one thing. There was a handout out on the table, the concerns of recreational marijuana in this community. All of my, not all, but several of my fellow department heads, who will also be impacted by this issue, each wrote about a paragraph on this two-sided paper, which, interestingly enough, none of us talked about what we were going to put on it, but every single one of us mentioned the high risk that it presents to the youth of our community. So it's not just a public safety issue. It's not just a police issue or a fire department issue. This is a community issue. And I'll just give you a couple more examples to think about. If we allow retail sales in the community, that by its very nature is going to draw more users into the community to purchase the marijuana items. Those users are very likely to not just take it and go home, which they're supposed to do, they're most likely to consume it, possibly within the borders of our community here. So the increased readily available items will be consumed in this community, so we're going to have higher instances of public consumption. Now, public consumption, like smoking, is illegal by town bylaw. That was passed several years ago, just before I came in as chief. But that doesn't mean that it's not going to happen. Okay? So we're going to have increased incidents of public consumption, most likely in our business districts and along our beaches. So I want you to consider that. Another thing to consider, also drawing those users from neighboring communities that don't have retail sales into our community, they're going to be coming here in motor vehicles, and they're going to be leaving here in motor vehicles. And that presents an increased likelihood that we will have people operating those motor vehicles under the influence of marijuana products. That creates an increased likelihood of those people under the influence crashing into other people on the roadways and injuring or killing them. And these are the same roadways that your family members drive on every day. I could continue with the examples, but I won't because I think you get the gist. Again, it's a community issue. So I would ask you to think very strongly about this prior to your vote, and consider the fact that there is unity across the town boards. The chairman of the Board of Selectmen, last night, stated it. We are in agreement that this is not good for this community. So I would urge you to support banning retail sales of marijuana and help us, your community leaders, public safety and your community leaders, help us protect the children of this community, the adolescents, young people of this community, and also make it a better, safer community that people want to come and visit and live in. Thank you.[1505.41][1505.41](Applause).
Further debate? Mr. Mundry.
I will offer some examples, my own, chief, that are in direct opposition and contradict yours. My brother was in Vietnam. While he was there, he smoked marijuana, like many of his colleagues, like many of his mates. He came back habituated to marijuana with PTSD, and it served him to function and to live, day by day, for 15 years. And I rode with him in his Volkswagen, his little Volkswagen bug. And he used marijuana cigarettes just like a smoker would use cigarettes. He was never stoned. He just used it to mellow him out. It kept him alive with PTSD. It was self-medicated, yes, and it was before the time of medical marijuana, and it was before the time the VA set up groups to help veterans like my brother who had PTSD. Secondly, before medical marijuana became available less than a decade ago, a dear friend's 52-year-old sister took chemotherapy. She had ovarian cancer. Her son had to go to the street, he at 15 and a half, to keep his mom from vomiting, from nausea, from the pain that she was experiencing from the chemotherapy. He helped his mom at risk to himself, and she also took a risk because street marijuana is unknown. If we have controlled marijuana, the purchaser knows what is in that. It's not fentanyl. It's not laced. And it may be pure CBD. It may have no THC whatsoever. My final example is going to be from my godson, who I just found out a little over a month ago is in his sixth recovery from opioids. I found out from his mom. And I'll read you just the first half of the letter. Dear, I learned through email from your mom that you have been addicted to opiates from the time they were prescribed for an injury. Know that your mom and others, me too, feel hope and love for you. You'll have to earn trust that has been broken. From who? I don't know, but you do. Trust, as you know, is easy to lose and real hard to win back. You'll have to show by what you do, not what you say, that your words are true by action behavior that whomever you've hurt can see. I don't know who has been hurt, but it's your task to make things right for them and for yourself. If you are offered the opportunity to participate in a medical marijuana research project, volunteer. Research, see Dr. Gupta's references, and you may be aware of this on television, weed versus pills, argues that CBD, and still unknown compounds in marijuana in controlled doses and settings, fights the brain's craving for opiates and helps to heal damaged parts of the brain, brain damage caused by addiction to opiates. So medical marijuana helps you to be free and heals too. This is not widely known, and the FDA, under Jeff Sessions, who's head of the Department of Justice, still puts marijuana in the same category as heroin, pure ignorance. Where medical marijuana is legal, ask for prescription. Here's a drug that can help cure addiction from hard drugs, and it's labeled by the feds as having no medical value. And I won't mention his name, but his name. You need a backup plan if you get that urge to use. Some become psychologically dependent but not addicted to pot. Street... Street pot has many unknowns.
Further debate, Mrs. Goldsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll throw you to the chief, if I may. I'm quite conflicted on this issue. I pretty much despise recreational use of marijuana. I do believe I've observed it, that it is addictive. I think it has been demonstrated and observed that it is for young people. It very much delays their development into adults, in terms of the kind of maturing tasks that one should do when one is young, however. So if we could, if it didn't exist, I would be very happy. However, when the chief spoke to, okay, the question that I have is, when you spoke to keeping it out of young people's hands, the problem to me is, I raised my kids on the Cape, it was very much in the hands of teenagers, and it was being sold by teenagers. And the teenagers who sold it were buying it from extremely scary people, and I became aware of that when there was an armed invasion about a half a mile from where I lived, and I knew the kid, and he had confided in somebody, and obviously, he was selling, and someone with guns who had a very strong interest in marketing his goods through this kid was coming after him to get the money, or whatever. And so, I'm really asking this as a very sincere question, in terms of law enforcement and so forth, if through illegal means, it's already in the hands of young people, and they're being used as pushers, and they have these marketing, you know, monsters behind them, it might seem an improvement, similar to alcohol, to have it sold legitimately, and that's where I'm very uncertain on this issue, and I would like the chief to address the criminality that already exists in the way marijuana is being marketed to young people now.
If the chief is still present and wants to respond, I'll recognize the chief to answer that question. But if you could keep it just to that question, chief, because I know there are a number of people who want to speak.
Yes, sir, Mr. Moderator. The answer is that communities out in Colorado and Washington who legalized recreational marijuana and marijuana sales continue to have black market crime. That's the bottom line. So this process, if it was put in place and allowed in this community, we would continue to have the criminal sales going on, and those actually have been shown in those states to increase, rather than decrease.
Further debate, Mr. McCaskill.
Good evening. I just want to clarify that this ban has nothing to do with medical marijuana whatsoever. We're not proposing to change that. We do not want to change that. It is not going to change. This is only about retail sales in the town of Harwich.
Further debate, Mr. Weiser.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I hope the chief might come back to the mic, because I have a couple of questions I'd like him to answer also. And one of those questions is pertaining to the, to the article that we passed several years ago regarding the penalty for public use of marijuana after it was legalized. And I'd like to know how many citations have been written in Harwich for people publicly using marijuana since that ordinance was passed, with a penalty substantially more punitive than the penalty for a similar violation of the law pertaining to having an open container of alcohol?
If the chief is here, you're still here, chief. Question, if you know, how many citations have issued? Under the bylaw, we adopted prohibiting consumption of marijuana on public property and in public places, which occurred after recreational marijuana was made legal.
The answer is, I don't have an exact number. My gut tells me, from reviewing the law on a weekly basis, that it's not many. It does occur. The importance of it is, though, that the law is on the books, and if it was, as I said, if public consumption was to increase, then that is one way it can be handled. However, it doesn't have an awful lot of teeth to it, and when it was first came about. But that is a way, it's handled through a bylaw citation. But not many have been written since that time.
And have any citations for public alcohol use of the same type been written?
Chief.
Sure. I don't have the numbers on that either. But they, it does occur, obviously. Same thing, bylaw.
My curiosity has to do with, is there a larger number of people abusing alcohol publicly than abusing marijuana publicly?
I would say yes.
Oh.
Yes, because right now, alcohol is more prevalent.
Right.
So, Mr. Weiser, we're not going to have a cross-examination here.
No, no.
I think the chief has answered your question.
He answered my question, and I have a point I want to make, now that he's answered my question.
That's fine, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think that we have been operating in our public discussion on this subject for a number of years, based on 80 years of prohibition and propaganda that suggests that marijuana is the gateway drug to all of the opioid use that we are now encountering. There's no evidence that that's actually true. There's no evidence that in Colorado, young people are using marijuana more now that it's legal. In fact, the evidence, as written in a number of reliable, what I believe are reliable sources, including the local newspapers and national newspapers, suggests that marijuana use among young people has declined. So my question is, what public safety issue are we actually addressing? I'm, like the previous speaker, much more concerned about young people getting their marijuana from people who also sell other much more dangerous drugs than I am about people, about young people getting marijuana from their older brothers or their friends who are old enough to buy it legally, in doses that are medically and otherwise responsibly measured. You know, street drugs are dangerous. Alcohol is a dangerous drug under any circumstances, but the fact that it's regulated and sold in prescribed terms, and that young people are forbidden from buying it even though they get it anyway, all of those are reasons why it's better to have the substance regulated and sold in a more controllable manner than pushing young people who are going to use and who are already using these drugs to do their business with people who sell other more dangerous substances. I think the whole reasoning behind this ordinance is based on an erroneous set of assumptions that the chief, even though he said he wasn't going to rail against the evils of marijuana, he did so. The evils of marijuana are no different than the evils of alcohol. In fact, they are less so. So why are we over-regulating marijuana and perhaps under-regulating alcohol use?
This woman right in the middle here.
Thank you. My name is Marilyn Schlansky. I live on Glenwood Drive in Harwich. I have no particular opinion for or against retail sales of recreational marijuana. When I was a teenager, it was readily available. I'm sure it's just as readily available now. I don't see that much harm in it personally, myself. As a matter of fact, and I agree with the gentleman that just spoke, it's been, there's scientific evidence to prove that it's not marijuana that's the gate, that causes opioid addiction. It's opioids that cause opioid addiction. Opioids, fentanyl, heroin, dangerous drugs that are, that are often adulterated, that are often prescribed legitimately by physicians for legitimate pain purposes, and, you know, and people get addicted, if you have the sort of addictive personality or addiction gene, just as you can easily get addicted to alcohol, if you have that capability in your biological makeup, you can easily get addicted to opioids just as well. My concern, I know that you said that there's no effect on medical marijuana, which has many, many proven, scientifically proven, good uses for PTSD, for cancer, to relieve pain, to relieve nausea. It's been well-proven and well-established. But the language in this amendment, it seems to me, or in the resolution, it seems to me, would, could easily be interpreted as a banning of a medical marijuana facility that may want to come into Harwich. And I would like to know how the planning board and the selectmen would handle that if something like that came to be.
Okay, let me see if I can get a response to your question. She asks whether or not an argument could be made, if this ban is adopted, that indeed it does also apply to medical marijuana, and would prohibit a medical marijuana establishment locating in the town of Harwich. I think the language of the by, maybe we could ask John Giorgio, our town council? I've recognized Mr. Giorgio, and then we'll go to Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The way the bylaw is crafted, in my opinion, it is not susceptible to the interpretation that it would apply to medical marijuana dispensaries. It is specifically excludes from the ban medic, medical marijuana. So I don't, somebody could certainly make that argument, but I don't think it would prevail.
Okay, thank you.
Further debate, I've got Mr. McParlin up from the planning board.
Joseph McParlin from the planning board. I'd just like you to know that we didn't get up one day and say, "Let's ban marijuana." We held extensive hearings. We heard from the chief of police, who testified. We also heard, to me more dramatically, from Detective Sergeant Braddock, who runs the, runs the detectives. And we're realistic about the fact that if we ban it in Harwich, that if somebody wants it, they'll go over to Dennis and buy it in Dennis. We just felt that the information provided to us by the chief and by the detective sergeant as to it being a gateway drug and leading to further types of problems was such that it should be banned in the town. I once again repeat, we know that because we're banning it in Harwich, doesn't mean that a youngster can drive over to Dennis and buy it. We just don't think we should make it that much easier in Harwich, and that's why we voted the way we did on the planning board.
Further debate, Mr. Kakounis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Very interesting debate, but with all due respect to almost every speaker that got up, their information that they're giving us has nothing to do with the bylaw. The fact that medical marijuana is not listed in here, and again, my heart goes out to the gentleman that spoke about the use of medical marijuana. No one is a bigger advocate than that than I. I won't get into my personal story, but for over 40 years, I've been advocating research in the use of medical marijuana. That's not what this article is pertaining to. This article is not pertaining to the banning of marijuana in the town of Harwich. This article is asking you people, the residents of the town, do you want to have a store here in our town? That's all it's asking you. It's not taking your rights away to buy it. It's not taking your rights away, as the previous speaker just said, to go to a town that allows a store to buy it and bring it back into your home and use it. We are not banning marijuana. What we are banning is a storefront and an establishment here in our town, in our community, to sell marijuana. That's the question before you. So as you think how you're going to vote on this, the next three articles, I believe the way this is working, if this one passes and we ban a store in our town, then we will not have to find or pass any of the following articles which deal in the zoning of it. Because if you decide to allow a store to come into our town, then we're going to then debate in length where you want that store. So that's what we're looking at in this particular article. Not banning marijuana, banning a store. So think about that when you vote on it, and if you do decide you want a store here, be prepared to find out where we're going to put it. Do you want it next to your business? Do you want it in your neighborhood? Do you want it in your mall that's near your home? That's going to be the questions that you'll be faced to follow. Thank you.
Further debate, this lady right here, and then I'll go to Mrs. Corbett.
Joanne Riss, 28 Sterling Road. I'm going to speak in support of the article for a few reasons. Without repeating what's been said earlier by the chief in regard to the youth of the community, that's my number one concern. And I do disagree with wherever the research came from that talked about it not being proven, that it certainly does in young people, affect how their brain works, how they reason. So that's my number one concern. My number two concern is, I'm going to speak for the police. I have a brother-in-law who's a policeman. Have a conversation, folks. You're going to find out quickly. The problem is enforcement. There's no way for an officer to prove someone they stop that they suspect has been under the influence of marijuana because they're driving erratically, or they've already had an accident, then the process begins. They get charged, they go to court, there's no evidence, it gets dropped. It goes on and on and on. Please consider the well-being, not only of the young people that are using it, or anyone recreationally, law enforcement. They're out there every day, putting their lives on the line. I do not want to give them one more thing to have to go to court about that they can't defend. And again, just to piggyback on Leo, if we vote to have this in our town, I don't want to hear anyone come back to town meeting and say, "Not in my neighborhood." Once it's done, it's done. Thank you.
Further debate, Mrs. Corbett. Pardon?
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, does somebody second that? Okay, so we have a motion to move the question, which is to terminate debate on this article. It's a non-debatable motion, requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of terminating debates, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. I rule a gut, the necessary two-thirds majority, and so we'll go forward with a vote. Again, we're on Article 34. The motion is that the article be accepted and adopted. This is a zoning bylaw amendment, so it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I'm going to take a standing count. If the tellers who were here last night are still in the hall, Mr. Thompson, Ms. McCarty, Mr. Evans, and Mr. Brophy, if you'd come forward and get your clickers. And you've already been sworn in last night, so we don't have to do that again. Okay, the tellers are set. They've got their marching orders and their clickers. So again, all those in favor of the motion, which is to accept and adopt Article 34, those in favor, please stand and hold your voting card. Ms. McCarty. Mr. Thompson.
54.
Can you say 54? Was that 54, Mr. Thompson?
54.
54, thank you. Mr. Evans.
74.
74. And Mr. Brophy.
30.
Thirty.
Thirty. Okay, all those in opposition to the motion, those opposed, please rise and show your voter card. Mr. Thompson.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Mr. Evans.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Mr. Brophy.
Five.
So those in favor of the motion, one hundred and eighty-four, those in opposition, forty-eight, it does pass, it received the necessary two-thirds majority. Now go to Article 35. See if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaw, Chapter 171 Marijuana, by adding a new Section 171-3 that would provide as follows, 171-3. Consistent with General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 3A2, all types of non-medical marijuana establishments as defined in General Laws, Chapter 94, Section 1, to include marijuana cultivators, independent testing laboratory marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, or any other types of licensed marijuana-related businesses shall be prohibited within the town of Harwich. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
The motion on Article 35 is accept and adopt. Is there any debate? Yes, ma'am.
Janet Cassidy, Partridge Lane in East Harwich. I'd like to know how you plan to distinguish between people who are cultivating marijuana for medical reasons and for non-medical reasons. Because it says that this would ban all types of non-medical marijuana establishments, including marijuana cultivators or independent testing laboratories. So if someone were testing for medical reasons or cultivating for medical reasons, how would you distinguish between that?
Perhaps town council might be able to give us some guidance on this. Mr. Giorgio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. So this article, just like the last one, excludes medical marijuana. So a cultivator or a testing laboratory that was dedicated to medical marijuana would not be covered by this ban, in the same way they're not covered in the previous vote.
Further debate, Mr. Weiser.
I'll yield to Mr. McManus.
Mr. McManus.
On the point of the previous question, the state has two separate systems of licensing marijuana. One is a medical, done by the Department of Health, and the other is the recreational, done by the Cannabis Control Commission. You can get a recreational cultivator license or a medical cultivator license. You can get a recreational testing lab license or a medical testing lab license, and the operations are completely distinct.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Mr. Weiser.
Thank you. Once again, I want to point out to my fellow residents of Harwich that what we are doing here is we are simply creating a hostile climate to something that is publicly accepted, even in our community, by a substantial percentage of the population. It wasn't as if the vote on the referendum that legalized marijuana statewide had numbers approximating one hundred and eighty-four to forty-eight in Harwich. The numbers were a heck of a lot closer than that. And this ordinance, while it's innocent in and of itself, what it basically does is create a hostile business climate for anybody who is considering the medical marijuana business, because it's only really viable for people in a business like that to be selling that product in both markets, to be cultivating for both markets. And you cannot distinguish, even though you have a different license, people who are trying to do business in the new business that involves marijuana, which has medical uses and recreational uses that some people may not like, but other people are going to be doing anyway, all we're doing is saying, "If you're interested in that business, we don't want you in our community." And since when are we in the business of making our community hostile to people who want to be in any business? I don't get it, on that line either.
Any further debate on the motion? Looks like you're ready for a vote. This is a general bylaw and requires just a simple majority. The motion under Article 35 is accept and adopt as printed. All those in favor of the motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
Motion carries. Article 36. To see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw, Article 12, Temporary Moratorium on the Sale and Distribution of Recreational Marijuana, as follows, and then it goes forward in the zoning bylaw to set forth the provisions for a temporary moratorium. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under Article 36 is accept and adopt as printed. Mr. Brophy, planning board report.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Again, at a duly posted and noted public hearing held by the Harwich Planning Board on January 23, 2018, the board voted unanimously to accept and recommend the moratorium on the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana zoning amendment as it appears in the annual town warrant. There was no public comment.
I have a copy, thank you. Is there any debate on the motion? Mr. Kakounis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm under the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, the reason why we should, in fact, support this, even though we previously voted a general bylaw and a zoning bylaw to prohibit these establishments in our communities, it would be smart for us to also pass this moratorium in the event those two previous articles go to the State House to be approved, and there may be a problem with them, either it be wrong wording or correct reference to Mass. General Law, this will allow us a backup so that those, our planning board would be able to correct those things and bring them back on a future town meeting. So I believe that's why we should support this. Maybe I could ask the planning.
I'm not going to suggest why you should support it, Mr. Kakounis, that's not my role, but maybe if there's somebody on the planning board that wants to speak to that issue.
Thank you.
Our town planner, Charlene Greenhouse. Charlene.
Yes. That's the answer.
You got a yes on that one, Leo.
I couldn't explain it better than.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 36? Now again, this is zoning, so this one requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I rule it got the necessary two-thirds majority, and it passed. Article 37. See if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw, Article 5 Use Regulations, 325 Supplemental Regulations, to include a new paragraph that would provide for marijuana establishments. I'm not going to read this one in its entirety, but this sets forth regulations had we not acted the way we did on the previous articles. Do we have a positive motion? Anyone on the floor have a positive motion? Then I'll recognize Mr. DeCosta for making a motion to indefinitely postpone.
I move this article be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 37 be indefinitely postponed. Mr. Brophy, we still need a planning board report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, at a duly posted and noted public hearing held by the planning board on February 13, 2018, the board voted unanimously to accept and to recommend marijuana establishment recreational use special permit zoning amendment as it appears in the annual town meeting warrant. There was no public comment.
May I ask a question for the benefit of the voters? Your motion was to recommend, was that before you knew obviously the actions that the town took on the prior three articles?
That, to my understanding, Mr. Moderator, was suspend his belt and vest. We don't need this.
Okay. Any further debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. The motion on Article 37 is it be indefinitely postponed? All those in favor of indefinite postponement, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The article's indefinitely postponed. Article 38. This is another one that I indicated I wouldn't read in its entirety. It is a proposed amendment to the charter of the town of Harwich, and therefore it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. It's to amend the charter to expand the roles of the water commissioners into the area of wastewater. So I hope you've had an opportunity to read it through. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motions are made under Article 38 to accept and adopt as printed in the warrant. Any debate? Mr. Thompson.
I have one question on this proposed change, and it's under 10-4-2. And what it says, "And any appropriation for operations such as water commission, water system, and for sewer system shall, following initial approval by the town administrator." It sounds like any decisions that we're making now will be taken over by the town administrator.
So is that a question to the sponsor of the articles? Is that?
Yep. Yes, please.
All right, so I think this was put in by the request of the selectmen and the water commissioners.
Well, yeah, I didn't see that at the time. I didn't see this final. They, I agree with ninety percent of it, but I want to understand more.
Okay, so again, your question, Mr. Thompson, let's see if we can get some discussion on it. It deals with Section 10-4-2.
Yep.
Then are we talking about the last sentence?
The third, yeah, the third, so it says, "Following initial approval by the town
Mr. Clark, can you shed any light on that sentence?
I believe so, Mr. Moderator. The intent, I believe, of this is that the way the process is going to work is that the board of selectmen would retain the design and construction of the sewer, and then after it's constructed, it would then be turned over to the water wastewater commission. So I believe this is the clause that allows for that turnover to occur from where the system is designed and built, then turned over to the water wastewater. So the board of selectmen wanted to retain the ability to design and construct, and then as the administrator, I do that on their behalf.
See, I don't have a problem, you know, the way it's going. I agree to that, the commission agreed to that. But from, from what it says to me, though, is that you will be making the final decisions on water and wastewater as we move ahead.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
I do believe that, if you look at the construction of that, it says, "And for the sewer system shall, following the initial approval of the town administrator, be available for expenditure." So I think that goes, again, to the design of the sewer system that then gets turned over to the water wastewater commission.
No, I can't buy that. I honestly, it appears that you're, one thing, my attempt here is to protect the water department. For many years, everything went, all the revenues went to the town treasury and all that, and the water department just found it, you know? We didn't do anything. So I think it's a good move to join the two, but I definitely feel that the water commissioners or water sewer commission should definitely continue to work with the town administrator and the board of selectmen and so forth. So what I'd like to see is an amendment there and change the town administrator to town meeting.
just to give you his thinking as town council on that phrase, so you'd have that, and then we can see where it goes from there. Mr. Giorgio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the provision of that clause, which I believe you're questioning is the words, "Following initial approval by the town administrator." The intent of that clause was to ensure that there would be town administration oversight going forward before the water and wastewater commission could actually expend funds appropriated by town meeting. That's an important check and balance, because the role of the town administrator is as the chief procurement officer for the town, so to ensure that public bidding laws have been complied with, other provisions of the town charter and the bylaws are complied with. It's meant to be a check and balance, and to give the town administrator that initial approval to ensure that the proper oversight essentially for procurement is built into the charter. That was the intent.
Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Moderator, I don't agree with that. Currently, the water commissioners elected do their own procurement and follow through. Everything goes through the process of approval, time meetings, the whole bit. And from what I read here, the town administrator's taken over the operations, and if the town administrator doesn't like what we decide, no, it's not going to happen. So I really believe that this is not worded the way that we had agreed to. If you start at all records, property and equipment whatsoever, the water commissioner shall be assigned to the water and wastewater commission in any appropriation for operations of such water commission and water system and for the sewer system shall, following initial approval by the town administrator, be available for expenditure by water wastewater commission, consistent with the purposes for which such funds were appropriated. That sounds like to me that we need the town administrator's approval in order to do anything.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I'm, exactly what it says. I can't read anything else into that.
So are you suggesting an amendment, Mr. Thompson, that that phrase be stricken? Or what are you proposing? Are you just suggesting that we not act favorably on that section?
Mr. Moderator, well, we have a couple of choices. We could change that wording from "following initial approval" and change that to "following initial review" by the town administrator. We'll have that discussion of an issue or problem, whatever. And we would anyway.
Mr. Clark.
Mr. Moderator, in light of this, you know, we don't have the sensitivity to do that immediately, so I would recommend to the board of selectmen that we indefinitely postpone this for tonight, and let's make sure we get it right. This is too important to kind of amend on the fly. So that would be my recommendation. So that would be my recommendation to the, to the board.
All right. I'll go for that. All right. Thank you.
Okay. We do have, however, a positive motion on the floor, and we do have to deal with that. So I've been handed now, as further debate, a memo from the Bylaw Charter Review Committee, which I've been asked to read. They held a public hearing on Tuesday, April 17th, for the purpose of soliciting comments as to the form related to Article 38. No negative comments were received. The proposed language was reviewed by the Bylaw Charter Review Committee and was found to be consistent with the structure of the town's charter and the code of the Town of Howard, and that's submitted by the Bylaw and Charter Review Committee. Any further debate? Mr. Kakounis?
Thank you. Before we encourage the town meeting floor to indefinitely postpone this, I want to know what the ramification is going to be on 10-4-3, because quite frankly, we thought this out. We have a number of people, or I think one gentleman who's running for county, for the water commissioners. It appears that if this was voted this evening, this probably would have taken place in the next annual election. Is it going to affect that if we put this off for a year? Will we still be okay timewise to do this next year in preparedness for the election that will happen two weeks afterwards?
Well, it's a charter change, and so the path, as I understand it, Mr. Kakounis, if the town meeting adopts it, it becomes a proposed order of amendment to the Howard's Town Charter and then goes to the Attorney General. And the Attorney General then reviews it to make sure it's consistent with the general laws of the Commonwealth. If they approve it, then it goes on the ballot for next May for a vote. If it's voted at the ballot, then it becomes an amendment to the charter. So it's a long process to amend the charter, and this is the first step here.
So if we indefinitely postpone it, we'll be looking at two years before this can be enacted instead of one?
Unless it was brought forward at a special town meeting between now and next May. If we had a special town meeting in the fall or something, this could be brought forward then, Mr. Kakounis.
Thank you.
Do you want to add anything? Mr. Giorgio, he wants to add to that?
Mr. Moderator, the only thing I would add is that the way this is structured, the moderator is absolutely correct that it would take effect if it's approved at the ballot in 2019. But one of the things this amendment does, it increases the number of commissioners from three to five. That election for the two new members would not occur until the May 2020 annual town meeting, which is two years out.
Further debate? Mr. Thompson?
Yes. As I look at it, it's, the sewer construction was just voted. It needs to go to a ballot in, what, a week, two weeks? At that point, it's at least two to three years before the thing is finished anyway, so it doesn't matter. It's when the project is complete is when it comes over to water to oversee it from there.
Right. Okay.
So I don't see any problem with indefinite postponement tonight and take it up next year and the following year.
All right. Just a moment, please.
So, so, yeah, so, um, so, Mr. Moderator, last night, the handout that you perhaps looked at in terms of the sequencing for the sewer has the operation of the system essentially beginning in June of 2021. Now, this amendment provides that the administration of the construction of the sewers will be with the Board of Selectmen. It's only when the sewer system becomes operational that there would be a role for the sewer commissioners, and that's anticipated at this point to be in June 2021.
Mr. Moderator?
I'm going to recognize Mr. Clark, Mr. Thompson, for the purpose of making a motion to amend.
And make a motion to amend to refer for additional study.
Back to the Board of Selectmen?
Back to the Board of Selectmen.
So he's seeking, and do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend the main motion, which is accept and adopt, to be worded that the town refer the matter back to the Board of Selectmen for further study. That's the proposed amendment.
I'm fine with that, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. So any debate now on the amendment to the main motion? Anything on the amendment? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. Again, we're amending the main motion, which was accept and adopt, to be a main motion that the matter be referred back to the Board of Selectmen for further study. All those in favor of the amendment so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The amendment carries, so we now have that as the main motion. Anything further by way of debate on that as the main motion? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question, and I'm going to ask it. Christine Odiaga, 14 Rainbow Way. I'm new to town. Apologies for not having read the Charter. I'd like to know what is said about other commissions in the Charter in the paragraph that's comparable to this one. I assume there's paragraphs comparable to this one that govern how other committees are operating?
Okay. Well, I appreciate your question. However, it's not really within the scope of this amendment at this point. The meeting has now decided that the, what they want to vote on is whether to simply refer this all back to the selectmen for further study. So any further debate on that main motion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Again, the motion under Article 38 now is that the matter be referred back to the Board of Selectmen for further study. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The motion carries. Article 39. See if the town will vote to amend the Howard's general bylaws by deleting the text and title of Section 7-10 in its entirety and inserting in place thereof the following table, and I indicated I wouldn't read that in its entirety. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under Article 39 is accept and adopt as printed in the warrant. Is there any debate?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Waystack?
Thank you, sir. Richard Waystack, chairman of the Howard's Council on Aging. Just a quick question. It was six years ago, May 8th, same date, that the town meeting voted to change the Council on Aging from nine members to seven. We're back again, six years later, changing it from seven members back to nine. Could I ask a question of the justification?
Anybody on the Bylaw Review Committee want to respond to that?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Waystack?
Hate to do it, but I'd like to offer an amendment, amending this from Council on Aging from nine members to seven.
Council on Aging is number five?
Yes, sir.
And the amendment is to strike nine and insert seven? Do I hear a second? It's been seconded. Want to say anything further, Mr. Waystack?
The difficulty in the past with nine members, number one, as you can see, it's the largest number of members for any of the commissions or committees in town. Number two, in the past, there've been difficulty appointing members to the Council on Aging, creating an issue with quorum counts. So it would be in the best interest of the council to have seven members rather than
Mr. Giorgio?
Mr. Moderator, since Selectman Howell is not here tonight, I feel I should address this. So the current Charter actually says there shall be a Council on Aging of nine members. That's what the Charter says. That provision was amended last year to say that the number of Council on Aging members shall be set by bylaw. And so the bylaw before you tonight is proposing a Council on Aging of nine members, which reflects what the current Charter provides. I just wanted to make that clarification. If it's the will of town meeting to reduce it to seven, you can certainly vote that
Any further debate on Mr. Waystack's proposed amendment to change the number of members on the Council on Aging from nine to seven? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the amendment so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The amendment carries. Any further debate now on the main motion? Hearing none, I'm going to put it to a vote. So the motion before you at this point is that the article be accepted and adopted as printed, except, under number five, Council on Aging, that the word nine be changed to seven. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The motion carries. Article 40. Again, one I indicated I would not read in its entirety. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 55(c), to establish an Affordable Housing Trust Fund and to further amend the code of the Town of Howard to add a new Chapter 140, Howard Affordable Housing Trust. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 40 be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 41. Another one that I indicated I wouldn't read in its entirety. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for three additional all-alcoholic on-premise liquor licenses, bringing the number of said licenses from 15 to 18, as set forth below. Said licenses not to be transferred to any other location, provided, however, the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Board of Selectmen approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, which are within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 41 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. Any debate? Yes, ma'am?
Noel Barard, Alado Farm Lane. I think it's interesting that we voted against the recreational marijuana industries, and we're considering increasing our alcohol.
Please, please, no applause. Just give your attention to the speaker so we can hear her.
And based upon what the chief said earlier about alcohol being a bigger problem than marijuana, I feel it would be unwise to increase the licenses.
Any further debate? Oh, Mr. McParland, Planning Board.
Mr. Moderator, I speak in favor of this article. These three, not institutions, these three facilities are already in existence, already have licenses. It would simply improve the expansion of their licenses is really what this is for these three facilities. They're existing businesses in the town that have licenses, but this would give them a more comprehensive licenses, the easiest way to explain it. So I would speak in favor of this article.
Further debate? Mr. Kakounis?
Just, because I don't want to read the whole thing. Could somebody just explain to me, this is basically taking a restaurant, a pouring license, not a liquor store, and who has a seasonal pouring license, and we're going to be increasing it to a year-round license? Is that my, do I have the correct understanding?
That's the shorthand of this article.
Thank you. I don't need an answer then. I just wanted to make sure I understood it right.
All right. Any further debate?
And in further answer?
Mr. McParland?
Just in further answer to Mr. Kakounis, essentially, we're allowed those three additional licenses because of our population, and that's why they, but you have to do it this way. You have to file a petition with the state and so forth.
Mr. Mundry?
Yes, I'm arguing to support the motion, although, as a previous speaker identified, there is an inherent inconsistency with the previous motion about banning marijuana. But I'm still supporting this motion.
Any further?
Although, yes.
I'm sorry. Any further debate on the motion under Article 41? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion is accept and adopt as printed in the warrant. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion carries. Article 42. See if the town will vote to adjust the senior work-off exemption in General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5k, by allowing an approved representative of persons physically unable to provide such services to the city or town, and two, allowing the maximum reduction of the real property tax bill to be based on 125 volunteer service hours in a given tax year rather than $1,500 and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 42 be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article 43. See if the town will vote to accept Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56, which upon acceptance of this section, the Board of Assessors may grant real and personal property tax abatement up to 100% of the total tax assessed to members of the Massachusetts National Guard and to reservists on active duty in foreign countries for the fiscal year they perform such service, subject to eligibility criteria to be established by the Board of Assessors. The authority to grant abatements under this section shall expire after two years of acceptance unless extended by a vote of the town. Said change to take effect FY 2019 and act fully thereon. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under Article 43 is accept and adopt as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 44, to see if the town will authorize and instruct the Board of Selectmen to decommission the Architectural Advisory Committee and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 44 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article 45. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take by eminent domain for the purpose of clearing the title for Central Avenue, used for the general municipal purpose as surplus property. The parcel is identified on Assessors' map 6B, parcel L134, and is approximately .04 of an acre. And there is a map in your warrant. Mr. Brown?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under Article 45 is accept and adopt as printed. It does authorize eminent domain. It will require a two-thirds majority to pass. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 46. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a deed in lieu of foreclosure pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 77(c) for .42 acres at 31 Lakeview Drive and .41 acres at 33 Lakefield Drive owned by Nancy Bailey. The parcels are identified on the Assessors' map, and they're shown in your warrant. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 46 be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 47. See if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, control of the parcel of land located on Willow Street and identified as Assessors' map, parcel 10x3, from the tax custodian for tax title purposes to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes and for the purpose of conveyance, to authorize the Board of Selectmen enter into agreements with the butters and to convey a portion or portions of parcel X10, excuse me, parcel 10- x3 to a butters, and in connection therewith to accept deeds from butters to portions of abutting parcels for the purpose of establishing boundary lines of all parcels for general municipal purposes and for the purpose of conveyance, and then to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to take parcel 10- conveyance, and then to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to take parcel ten dash X three and/or the foregoing portions of abutting parcels by eminent domain, if appropriate, for the purpose of clearing the town's title thereto and/or for affordable housing purposes, and then further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey all or portions of parcel ten dash X three and other land acquired by the town hereunder for affordable housing purposes for such consideration, which may be nominal consideration, on such other terms and conditions as the board deems appropriate. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion made and seconded that this article be accepted and adopted as printed. It does require a two-thirds majority to pass. Eminent domain is authorized within the body of that article. Is there any debate? Yes, Ms. Sebula.
Linda Sebula, four sixty, Route twenty-eight. I'm just rising to say that those of us who remember Jerry Loftus now know that he is probably, if this passes, he's dancing in the aisles down in New Jersey. Fifteen years he worked on this specific parcel to try to get this cleared up. Thank you very much for passing this in his name.
Any further debate on the motion under Article forty-seven? Looks like you're ready to vote. The motion is accept and adopt as printed. All those in favor so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote and I so declare it. Article forty-eight, this is the first of the community preservation articles. And so before I get to the article itself, I'm going to recognize Mr. Nixon, who's the chairman of the Community Preservation Committee for the Community Preservation Report to the annual town meeting. Mr. Nixon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Howard adopted the Community Preservation Act, the CPC or Act, modified to accommodate or replace the so-called land bank effectively beginning July first, two thousand and five. The Act establishes a three percent property surcharge supplement by the state by an amount depending on other funds raised. The Act requires the establishment of a committee, the Community Preservation Committee, to study and recommend to the Board of Selectmen and the town projects to be funded with these resources. The town committee comprises of nine members, which are two Selectmen employees, a representative from housing, the Housing Committee representing from the Housing Authority, Recreation, Historical Commission, Open Space, Real Estate, and the Conservation and Planning Board. The committee members are presently Cindy Moss, Selectmen Representative, James Atkinson, Planning Board, Joe Powers, Historic Commission, Dave Nixon, the Chair, Reckon Youth, Daniel Chalk, Selectmen Representative, Kathy Green, Vice Chair, Real Estate, Open Space, Mary Muslowski, Housing Committee, and a new member, Randall Palm, from the Housing Authority. At this point, I'd like to recommend for their former service, Bob Bradley, Walter Diggs, and Bob McCready, a thank you from myself for their help. The fiscal year twenty eighteen, the CPC made recommendations to the May seventeenth, twenty seventeen annual town meeting of five projects. These town meetings approved of all, approved all five articles. In addition, the town approved payment of debt service of six hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars associated with the land bank purchase. The CPC received sixteen applications for consideration in March for the May twenty eighteen town meeting totaling three million five hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. There is approximately two million five hundred and seventy-six thousand seventy-eight available after the last town meeting's articles appropriation. And nine hundred and, nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-seven, undesignated funds, and they're broken up this way. The undesignated funds are one million three hundred and seven thousand six hundred and seven dollars. Open space, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Historic preservation, four hundred and twenty-one thousand six eighty-six. Community housing, five hundred and forty-seven thousand eighty-five dollars, and nine hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-seven from FY nineteen estimated annual revenue. These numbers are approximate. I'd like to, I'd like to thank the following people. I'd like to thank town administrator, the chairman, the Board of Selectmen Chairman, and the town finance director for helping me with these articles. The CPC has voted the following articles. They start with Article forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight. The CPC voted these in twenty seventeen to fund and bring to the annual town meeting in May for approval. With the requirement of the land bank debt service of approximately five hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, the amount of funds available for projects in all the areas permitted by CPC is approximately three million seven hundred and twenty-six thousand two hundred and three dollars. The Act requires that ten percent of the estimate received be allocated to open space, historical preservation, and community housing regardless of the distributions of the funds. The Community Preservation Committee will continue to dedicate itself to distribute the funds annually for appropriate projects that enhance the town and preserve the community in an adequate manner. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. And within that report, I just want to point out to the town meeting was the fact that the CPC committee has voted in favor of Articles forty-eight through fifty-eight in your warrant and recommends to the town meeting that you approve those articles. That's part of their report. So with that, we'll go to Article forty-eight. See if the town will vote to reserve for future appropriation amounts from FY two thousand eighteen Community Preservation Act Fund estimated annual revenues as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee as follows. A sum of money for the acquisition, creation, preservation of open space, sum of money for acquisition, preservation, and restoration and rehabilitation of historic resources, sum of money for acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and a sum of money for the Community Preservation Act Fund FY two thousand eighteen undesignated fund balance. Mr. Brown.
I move the town transfer from FY nineteen estimated revenue Community Preservation Fund, sum of one hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and three dollars for the Historic Reserve Fund, one hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and three dollars, for the Open Space Reserve Fund, one hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and three dollars. And the same, one hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and three for Community Housing Reserve Fund. So there should be three.
There are.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion Mr. Brown just moved is under this article is for, from FY nineteen estimated revenues Community Preservation Fund, that one hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and three dollars be reserved for historic, open space, and community housing, all three buckets. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article forty-nine, see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Act Funds Undesignated Fund Balance, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to fund the debt service on the outstanding land bank debt. Any funds left unspent under this article are to be returned to the CPA Funds Undesignated Reserve and act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move to appropriate from Community Preservation Act Funds dash Undesignated Fund Balance, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to fund the debt service on the outstanding land bank debt in Article four of this town meeting. Any funds left unspent from this article are to be returned to the Community Preservation Act Funds dash Undesignated Fund Balance.
Motion under Article forty-nine is to accept and five hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to fund the debt service to be transferred to Community Preservation Act Funds Undesignated Fund Balance to fund the debt service of the land bank. Any debate on that motion? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article fifty, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from the Community Preservation Act a sufficient sum of money to fund the items in the table below, consistent with their respective applications. Any funds left unspent in the article are to be returned to CPA Fund from which the appropriation, excuse me, from which the appropriation is made as specified in the chart below, and I'm not going to read the entire chart. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted and that one hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds as identified on this chart in the warrant for this purpose.
Motion under Article fifty is that one hundred and thirty-nine thousand be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds as identified on the chart in the warrant for the purposes set forth therein. Any debate? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Sally Urbano from West Horwich. On number five, under the chart, I need some help. Specifically, it's under the Historic Reserve. It's contracting for records retention. I'm having a hard time understanding. Could someone tell me what a records retention specialist would be doing and then what call through historic documents means?
Anybody from the CPA committee want to respond to that question? Oh, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What this is, is a specialized firm that the state of Massachusetts has the, a rule and regulation, if you would, for what documents need to be retained and which documents can be destroyed in a certain sequence or amount of time. This firm would actually go through, the idea behind this is we don't want to have to save or record records that are duplicates. So they would go through and they would actually identify the records that need to be put into the records vault and those that could be destroyed or duplicates that we don't need to save, they would call that out.
All right, so I'm assuming.
Mrs. Urbano.
I'm still trying to understand because under the Historic Reserve, this would be, to be considered historic for CPA purposes, which may be different from what the town is considering storing or looking at here. For CPA purposes, the records would have to meet the definition of historic resources in section two of the CPA Code. And that is historic resources are defined as a building, a structure, a vessel, real property, a document or an artifact that is listed on the state register of historic places, or has been determined by the local Historic Preservation Commission to be significant in the history, archaeology, architecture, or culture of a city or town. So when I look at number five and then I look below where it's explaining a little bit more, it says preservation and archiving of public record storage at the Howard Community Center. This seems to be out of the scope of what would qualify for CPA historic project. So what was your thinking? How are you going to justify that?
So the question, as I understand it, is does number five fit within historic reserve as it's defined in the CPA Act? That's, that's the question.
When the services of the consultant are obtained, we'll make sure that they comply with that element as well as the records retention of the state.
But to qualify for funding now, you would have had to had approval from the Historic Commission to get this to this point. And did that happen?
Yes, it did. Do you, Ms. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Clark.
So I don't understand how it could happen if you don't yet know what documents you're going to be saving. How could the Historic Commission have approved it when you don't know which ones are going to be saved and which ones are going to be thrown away?
So I guess the question, Ms. Clark, was she asked, did the Historic Commission approve this? And I think the response was yes. Is that correct?
The Historic Commission did approve the process to make sure that we identified the necessary records as being historical in nature and necessary for being retained for a public record. The purpose of calling through is to actually have them do that work of reviewing it so they were aware of the process and approved the process to follow. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Any, any further debate? Mr. Nixon, did you have something further?
Not at this time.
Okay. Anything further, Mrs. Urbano?
I still can't delineate in the explanation below the chart, the preservation and archiving of public record storage. So are there going to be public records as well as historic records that you're going to preserving, be preserving in the storage? Are they going to be combined?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Nixon.
As to that particular question, any record from the town over a period of time can be considered historic because as I understand it, the state demands that the town keep all records for a certain period of time. So.
But that doesn't fit within the CPA guidelines. The state may have.
The CPA voted this. We debated it thoroughly.
Okay. I will just remind you, and you may know this, that if we fund something that is actually not eligible for CPA funding, we are governed by the Department of Revenue and they can come back and say, that was illegal.
Absolutely.
Okay. And they can take that, that money. So I refer the rest of my comments to another article. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate on the motion under Article fifty? Yes, sir.
Yes. Don Holt, Howard, Mass.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. You need to speak right into that microphone if you can.
I'm concerned about the bike path, Pleasant Lake, Crossing, and all the other ones. I drive a big truck. A couple of times, people have cut right across the road without stopping. I don't think a light is going to help. You need to do more. Make it harder for them to cross the road. You have to actually stop without one of us killing somebody. That's a concern. You know, if I, if I hit them, I'm at fault. Whether they stop or they cross the road, it's happened to me several times. And they just looked at me and go, eh, you know? But if I hit them, I'm in trouble. So I think we need to do more than just put lights up. Thank you.
Any further debate? Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious because I don't know what's involved. It looks like just about fifty thousand dollars is being allotted for preservation of the gravestones at the Mount Pleasant Cemetery Grave Stone. Is that the one at Route thirty-nine and Route one twenty-four?
No, that's on South Street, between South Street and Forest Street on the way into Howardport from Howard Center.
Could someone explain what's involved in the preservation of the gravestones? Are these historic gravestones that are going to be preserved?
Cemetery Administrator, Ms. Kelly.
Robin Kelly, Plain Road. The preservation of the cemetery stones are, the cemetery stones that are going to be preserved are on the left-hand side if you were coming up from Howardport. All of that area are all historic monuments. They're all from the late eighteen hundreds to the early nineteen hundreds. I think the newest one is probably nineteen oh five. There is forty-one monuments that will need to be reset and repaired due to fractures, a hundred and eight monuments that either have foundation repairs or reset. Monuments are leading in, in need of repair for treatment, for toppling over, or voted stones that need to be cleaned and consolidated for strengthening.
Any further debate on the motion under Article fifty? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Again, the motion is accept and adopt. The full sum of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds as identified on the chart in the warrant for this purpose. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It is a vote. Article fifty-one, see if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Act Funds Historic Reserve, three hundred thousand of additional funding to accomplish historic preservation work on the exterior of the Brooks Free Library appropriated at the two thousand and sixteen annual town meeting. Any funds left unspent from this article ought to be returned to the Community Preservation Act Funds Historic Reserve and to act fully thereon. Mr. DeCosta.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted and that three hundred thousand dollars be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds Historic Reserve for this purpose.
Motion under Article fifty-one is accept and adopt. The sum is three hundred thousand and it's to be transferred from Community Preservation Funds Historic Reserve for this purpose. Any debate? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Marilyn Schlasky, Glenwood Drive. I just want to, you can't hear me. Can you hear me now?
Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Okay. How's that? I just want to support this resolution, this appropriation of funds. I was the public library director for 25 years, the last 15 years, in a building that was on the National Historic Register. I know the issues involved with preserving these places. I know how libraries are funded. Yesterday, we heard many impassioned speeches about voting enough money to do the job right, to have the firehouse built right, to have things built right. And I think it's very important for this town resource, which is used by many, many people of all ages and affects everybody, to have this done right. So if it takes more than $300,000 to fix this library, which is a gem in our community and which is very evident for anybody coming into Howard Center, and which frankly looks awful right now and is somewhat of an embarrassment because of the outside physical, the way it looks outside, I think enough money, there shouldn't be a limit of $300,000 if it takes more than that to do the job correctly.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 51? Hearing none, I'll put it to, yes?
Good evening. Bob Pianosi, Howardport. Just a quick question about, because the library's kind of been something that I've taken a lot of interest in. I'm sorry.
You really have to speak into these. They're not picking up the sound very well.
I'm sorry. Bob Pianosi, Howardport. I just have a question. This $300,000, is that in addition to other funds? It is. So is there, because it is an embarrassment when we look at the building, what is the timeline to actually get this done? Do we have actual proposals, bids to do the work? And if we do, when do we do it?
I see Mrs. Hewitt rising, our librarian.
Hi. Jenny Hewitt. Thank you very much for your support. We do have a bid is in several weeks ago, and so with this additional $300,000, we'll have the money to do it. Once, if this article passes tonight, then the town facilities manager and the town engineer will bring the contract to the selectmen for their approval and awarding of the contract. There was one bidder. So we are lucky that we have, that there was one bidder, and it wasn't someone with an inflated price that, again, we don't have the money. So I would ask that you support this. This work has to be done. The chemical stripping of the building has to be done when the temperature is above 60 degrees consistently at night. So that means, you know, maybe starting mid to late June through the summer. So hopefully this summer, and if you all support the article, we can get the building looking better. It is a historic building. It's on the State Historic Register. It's on the National Register as part of the Howard Center Historic District. And right now, it's an eyesore. And it really needs to be fixed, so...
Well, I certainly support getting it done. Do we have a timeline, how long this will take?
Yes, it's several months. It'll be all summer.
It'll be all summer.
That's what I've been told, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 51? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Again, the motion before you is accept and adopt. The sum is $300,000 be transferred from Community Preservation Funds Historic Reserve for this purpose. All those in favor of the motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 52. See if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Act Funds Historic Reserve $120,275 to construct an appropriate municipal public record storage facility in the Howard Community Center for the Preservation and Archiving of Public Records. Any funds left unspent for this article ought to be returned to CPA Fact Funds Historic Reserve. Mr. Brown?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted and that $120,275 be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds Historic Reserve of $18,946 and $101,329 from FY19 Estimated Annual Revenue for this purpose.
So the motion under Article 52 is accept and adopt. It is the same amount, $120,275. It splits it up a little differently than the article. $18,946 is coming from Historic Reserve. $101,329 is coming from FY19 Estimated Annual Revenue. Any debate on the motion? Mrs. Hewitt? I'm sorry, Mrs. Urbano?
I just have a question, again, about this one. This ties in with the historic records that we were talking about earlier. This facility will store, I'm assuming, modern town records as well as historic records?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question. You need to speak right into that microphone.
I'm asking, will this facility store modern town records as well as the historic records that we talked about earlier?
So the question is, what records are going to be stored in this facility once it's constructed?
Right.
Anybody respond to that? Carolyn?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for your question. Carolyn Carey, the Community Center Director. Previously, the motion that you voted was to cull the records and go through. So when they accomplish that, then they need a place to store them. So this will build what's considered a vault. In the Massachusetts law, there's something called the technical bulletin. So in order to be up to date with what we can put in there that meets all the criterias, we would have to have a place to store them. Where they're being stored now is not sufficient. So the majority of the records would be historic, but there could be other ones as well, depending on what they cull through, and I don't know that in advance, so...
Okay, so we don't have, we don't have any idea how much might be historic and how much might be, for instance, current town records or modern town records?
Well, I'm going to give you what I learned going through this, and I'm happy to share the information.
Yeah.
Town records can become historic at different times and purposes. So we don't know exactly when something would be, other than by age, but there are other criterias as well.
Okay.
So in order to keep those records preserved, we need to have a place to store them. So yes, there could be, but we just don't know when something could be. You know, George Washington could have sat in that chair, and then it could have become important, so...
Okay. Interesting dilemma.
I don't think he did, by the way.
Any further debate?
I have a concern. So my concern continues. If the facility stores modern town records as well as historical town records, then that would be the problem. Because towns cannot use CPA funds to take care of obligations they have under the state public records law to store current and future town records. It's a responsibility of the town's general fund. So I don't know if it's eligible or not, because I can't quite tell.
Any further debate? The motion under Article 52 is accept and adopt. Again, it's $120,275 be transferred from CPA funds. The Historic Reserve is $18,0946. The balance, $101,329, is from FY19 Estimated Annual Revenue. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article 53. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Act Funds Community Housing Reserve $300,000 to support Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, Inc., in building six new affordable homes located at 93 through 97 Main Street in West Howard, and to enter into a grant agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, Inc., and further authorize a board of selectmen to accept an affordable housing restriction on the property. Mr. Brown?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted and that $300,000 be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds to Community Housing Reserve for this purpose.
Motion under Article 53, accept and adopt. The sum is $300,000, and it's proposed to be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds Community Housing Reserve. Mr. Mandri?
Yes. I have swung many a hammer, put up many a stud, been on a ladder, and participated in Habitat for, Habitat for Housing, Habitat for Humanity in Connecticut housing. I have been on site. I have tripped on wires. I've used saws, and I've nicked myself a couple of times in my younger days. But we always had autonomous funding. Habitat Humanity had self-funded. We didn't have assistance from the community. And that's why this is very confusing to me. We required a certain number of hours for the residents who were going to take advantage, who were going to benefit from the housing. And we had volunteers such as myself who put in our hours for free. But we did, from Habitat for Humanity, fund for the materials, for the tools, for everything, windows, everything, land. And I do not understand why we are taking $300,000 from Community Preservation Act Funds. It's just not how I perceive Habitat for Humanity as an autonomous, self-funded group. And it looks like, I remember in Article 49, we took on the debt service of almost $600,000 for the land bank through Community Preservation Act Funds. And it seems like we are nibbling away $100, $300,000 at a time. And this is $300,000 that, I'm just surprised that the town is contributing to Habitat for Humanity. It's the first time I've seen it. I have not experienced this in Connecticut. This is unique to me. And I'm taken aback by it. What's the rationale?
Well, let me recognize Ms. Goldsmith from Habitat for Humanity.
Okay, Vicki Goldsmith, Howard resident, and also the executive director of our local Habitat for Humanity for the last 18 years. So I appreciate your volunteerism in Connecticut. And actually, for someone that goes way back to the early days of Habitat for Humanity, in its earliest days, we actually did not use any government funding from the foundation up. And some years ago, really, in order to further the program that was modified by Habitat International, so you are talking back to the earliest tradition, so that we would not use more than 30% of funding from any one source, including government, nor become otherwise, that the government funding could not restrict our usual principles in how we work. So indeed, the families still put in between 250 and 500 hours of sweat equity before they purchased the home. Unique to our affiliate in Massachusetts, every home we sell has an affordable deed rider, which was also not part of Habitat for Humanity's original origins. But this way, when a community contributes, this essentially $50,000 per house equivalent, that becomes an affordable housing resource in perpetuity. If it's sold in the future, it will be affordable again to another family. The original buyer will have built up equity in the home. They'll get that equity back, but they won't realize any profit on the land value. The reason really why we are driven to request town funds is substantially, not solely, but substantially, because towns do not put in roads for affordable housing anymore. They don't donate lots right on a road. So we are not only building the home, but we are putting in a short road and utilities. And that's a little bit past what private funding can do in terms of creating affordable homes. So at this point, Habitat for Humanity is really one of the few organizations on Cape Cod that are building affordable homeownership homes for local families. We do need this funding. We are putting considerable, considerable private donation funding into the homes as well, and volunteerism, and we hope the town will support this development. Thank you.
Thank you for your explanation.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready to vote. Again, the motion under Article 53 is accept and adopt. The sum is $300,000 to be transferred from Community Housing Reserve. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 54. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Act Funds Undesignated Reserve $333,500 to replace the current Brooks Park lighting system with a new comprehensive lighting system. Any funds left unspent from this article ought to be returned to the CPA funds. Mr. DeCosta?
Thank you. I move that this article be accepted and adopted and that $333,500 be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds Undesignated Fund Balance for this purpose.
Motion under Article 54 is accept and adopt. The sum is $333,500 to be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds for this purpose. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 55, which I'll not read in its entirety. See if the town will vote to authorize a board of selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain for conservation and open space purposes parcel of land on Seth Whitefield Road, its 24.6 acres, more or less, and described in a deed recorded with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, and that the care, custody, control, and management of the land be vested with the Conservation Commission. And to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, including without limitation, from Community Preservation Fund Open Space Reserve, $209,695.30, and Undesignated Reserve, $159,304, for a total of $369,000. And to authorize the selectmen or Conservation Commission to apply for grants or any funds that may be provided by the Commonwealth or other public or private sources to defray all or a portion of the cost of this acquisition. Mr. DeCosta?
Thank you. I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $369,000 be transferred from the Community Preservation Act Funds. Open Space Reserves, $209,695.30, and Undesignated Fund Balance, $159,304.70 for this purpose.
Okay, the motion is positive under 55. It's accept and adopt. Same money as in the article, 369, and it's broken up the same way from the two fund balances. Debate on the motion? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Dave Callahan, 131 Clearwater Drive. In the interest of full disclosure, I'd like to let everyone to know that I am a volunteer for the Howard Conservation Trust, as well as a member of the Real Estate and Open Space Committee. While I'm actively involved with both organizations, the comments I'm about to make are mine and mine alone. Like Mike Locke at the HCT, I'd like to see all undeveloped property put into conservation. That's never going to happen. Choices have to be made, and you're going to make one tonight. The Real Estate and Open Space Committee, where properties acquisitions are evaluated and ranked along a variety of criteria. In recent years, as CPA funds have dwindled, we've tried to be more thoughtful in our evaluations. Just because an opportunity is available to us is not a sufficient reason to commit to it. We now focus on a long view and getting the biggest bang for our limited resources. I'm going to vote against this article for several reasons. First, this parcel did not rank higher in conservation value than several other properties the Real Estate and Open Space Committee is looking at. Its conservation value may actually be decreasing as a result of development, which is currently being built on Seth Whitefield Road. Two, support for this acquisition by town boards and committees has been split, and significantly split. Mostly, I'm concerned about draining these dedicated CPA open space reserves, and that there is another way to acquire this property without tapping into those funds. According to my first point, Seth Whitefield rate today is significantly different than it was just two years ago. There is extensive development of residential lots just north of the Judah Eldredge property. In July 2017, that's just last summer, the developer received permission from the town to widen the last quarter of a mile from Raptor Road north to Round Cove Road from nine feet to 18 feet. I drove it yesterday and was shocked. No longer is it a nearly impassable sandy cart path, but now a two-car wide, straight, without steep inclines residential dirt road. When those houses are built, that road will easily have two to three times the traffic that is currently experienced with just the two houses that are currently there. I would also think that it's just a matter of time before those homeowners get tired of the potholes and insist upon a full 20-foot wide paved road. When that happens, the town's existing... When that happens, the town's existing parcel, which is north of Judah, and the Judah Eldridge property will be significantly separated from the conservation parcels to the west. You may ask, if there's so much development going on, why isn't Judah threatened as well? Well, I've spoken with a person who is doing the development there. He has acquired other parcels, doing significant, those other parcels, doing significant deed and genealogical research required of owner's unknown property. He buys up the rights of descendants and puts those parcels back on the tax rolls. He's done this elsewhere in town, and he knows the process well. He told me that he's looked extensively at Judah and determined that with 200-plus descendants, which in a recent letter I saw was written by the town administrator, says more than 400 descendants, as well as $400,000 in back taxes due, will make that financially impossible and viable to develop. So that's going to stay open land, not going to be built. Now, on the other point, the split decisions. There have been multiple boards that have looked at this property and put in their two cents in their votes, and there's been quite a range of recommendations. The town meeting warrant shows that the finance committee voted 5-0 in favor. And I'm assuming their criteria is whether the town could afford it in the current budget cycle and is there funding. I don't know if they considered the long-term implications of future conservation acquisitions, but I can accept that. That's not their charge. Similarly, I can understand the Conservation Commission giving it a positive vote. They get conservation land, not coming out of their budget. In November, the Real Estate and Open Space Committee has been looking at this property for quite a while, and voted in October, 0 to 5 recommending to the CPC funds. In November, the Selectmen asked us to reconsider our vote, and in December, the chair asked for a motion to reconsider. No one spoke. And therefore, our October decision was allowed to stand. At the January 11 CPC committee meeting, there was a straw poll on each of the requests before it. The Judah property received four votes against and three not sure. That was only a straw vote, but certainly not positive. When the final CPC vote came in on the January 18, there were 10 unanimous votes, and you can see all of the votes currently in the warrant. The Judah property was 3 to 4, certainly not an overwhelming level of support there as well. But my biggest issue with this article is funding. CPA monies are limited, and state funding to CPC budgets have been decreasing year after year. This article will drain every last penny out of CPC's open space reserves, as well as a big chunk out of the unrestricted reserves. That means more important parcels that the Real Estate and Open Space is currently evaluating will have that much more difficulty of being acquired in the future. What happens to those CPC monies after the eminent domain taking? For the Judah acquisition, the town is going to declare them as payment for the back taxes and move that money to the general fund. The net result is that the limited CPA money gets moved to general spending. Is that bad? Not necessarily. We do get conservation land in return. There is, however, another way to get that same property into conservation without the use of CPA funds. With $473,000 due in back taxes and assessed value of $443,000, the tax taking can be done. Like eminent domain, the back tax receivable will be eliminated, and the town will own the land. We have asked why this approach has not been used, and we're simply told that eminent domain was faster and provides clearer title. While that's true, what's the rush? Why do we have to do this now? This property is not at risk for anyone to develop or to acquire and develop or do anything with. It will stay in its current state. If you think that getting one parcel is good use of these CPA funds, I encourage you to vote yes. I'm all for conservation. Me, I'm going to vote against it. I want to vote to preserve those funds for future, more deserving properties, and I hope that the Selectmen will eventually decide to use a tax taking for this particular parcel. In the meantime, I think Judah Eldridge property can remain as it is. Thank you. Good evening.
Any further debate on this article? Yes, ma'am.
Nancy Smith, Pleasant Park Circle. I have a question for Dave. I think it would go to Dave. Is this parcel the area where we're going to be having the proposed water rechargement? I don't have the right word. Is that this parcel? And how are we going to get this parcel for that? I mean, I know we didn't do it, but...
Want to respond to that, Mr. Clark? What was your first question, ma'am?
Was that water rechargement area from last year or the year before within this parcel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. They are one in the same parcel.
So is this reaction to that so that it can't happen in the future?
Well, through you, Mr. Moderator. There was a request before town meeting. Town meeting voted for the recharge. It went to the ballot. It failed, so therefore, it failed at the request of neighbors and request of the general public. This came forward to have the town consider it for conservation. So we are responding to public interest.
I just wanted that to be on the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further debate? Mr. Kokonas.
Thank you. On our second night, we've spent an incredible, an absolutely incredible amount of money, with very little discussion, by the way. And this one here interests me the most, because this one here, as the gentleman stated, is a parcel of land that has some tax due on it. All of us have our property taxes assessed for CPC funds, and those funds are gathered. You saw the total up there, 2.9 million, I believe, was what we started with. And every year, we disburse those funds. Basically, what we are doing this evening is we are going to be taking these CPC funds that we've set aside to buy open space, and we're buying it from ourselves, believe it or not. You're going to be taking this money, putting it in an account, taking this land, and then because of the past due taxes on it, the town will be able to collect money from ourselves back again. We're actually going to be getting clear title to this land and keeping our money. I don't understand how this is a bad deal. We're basically taking our money from one savings account that we've appropriated it to purchase open space, and we're moving our money from that pool into the general funds, which is still our money, and we're getting clear title to a piece of land. I don't see how anyone can not support this.
Any further debate? Amy?
Amy Sausky, Conservation Administrator for the town.
Are you a resident?
I am not a resident.
Any objection to hearing from our Conservation Administrator? Hearing none, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm speaking on behalf of the Conservation Commission, and I've had the opportunity, I'm sitting on Real Estate and Open Space Committee meetings pretty much every time, and I also have gone to all of the Community Preservation meetings in regards to this article. I'm really just going to speak to the conservation aspects of this article. I'm not a financial person. Those questions are not for me. But I am an environmentalist. And this is 24.6 acre parcel of land. It is, as you can see on the screen here, it's a little difficult because it is bright in here. You can see Hawx Nest Forest. The parcel itself is in red, which hatched orange lines. Hawx Nest State Forest, which is hundreds of acres of state conservation land, is immediately to the west. So there is connectivity, which is one of the criteria the Conservation Commission looks at when determining whether parcels make sense for us to acquire. Connectivity is key for wildlife habitat. Excuse me. It's also in the Six Ponds Conservation District. It's in the Zone 2 water recharge area. It has been designated by this town as a sensitive area and an area that we want to protect our water quality. So this parcel, in the eyes of the Conservation Commission, who voted unanimously to support this acquisition, was kind of a no-brainer. No, it doesn't have wetlands. It's not the Bell's neck with the reservoirs, but it does have good habitat value on it. So the Conservation Commission did support this article. And if this was developed potentially, it could be 10 house lots, which is also in the Pleasant Bay watershed system. It'd be 10 additional house lots in an already impaired watershed area. So it's 10 more house lots that we don't potentially have to sewer. If anybody has any questions about the environmental aspects, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Amy. Further debate? Gentleman in the middle here.
Good evening. Jim Chevry. I live in East Howard on Hawx Nest Road. To give some context to this, two years ago, you all may remember that at town meeting, they tried to, the town, I believe it was through the Selectmen, the town tried to take this land by eminent domain for the purpose of a wastewater treatment plant and/or effluent recharge zone. I couldn't believe that they wanted to put a wastewater treatment plant in Hawx Nest. Shocking. There was no map provided. People didn't get the correct information at town meeting. In the next two weeks, I started the No on 9 campaign to defeat the article at the general election. I went door-to-door with the group that we formed. We spoke to residents for those two weeks, every day. Every day, we're talking to people left and right. Once people found out where this was, exactly where it was, and what the town wanted to do, they were extremely upset. If everyone can think back to two years ago, there was a lot of anger at the time at what was almost done at town meeting. Some people felt misled by what happened. Once they got the facts, they certainly felt that that was not an appropriate use of the land up in Hawx Nest. It was soundly defeated at the election. Now is the time, one thing that we heard over and over again while we're knocking on doors and talking to people was they couldn't believe that they want to put a wastewater treatment plant in, and they said over and over again that that land needs to be in conservation. It's directly across the road. It's a dirt road, 18 feet wide. It's wider than that now because it was cleared for the five houses that are going into the north of it. That will grow in to the edges of the road. It's not going to be as wide as it is right now. But they wanted it to be put into conservation. Now is our time to do that. I made a promise to people that I would beat the drum on that, and I attended also several meetings for the past two years, constantly, meetings with the Real Estate Open Space Committee, Conservation Committee, and finally, this year, the Selectmen, and especially Chris Clark, was able to get it approved using the CPC funds. As was stated earlier, these funds are already there. It's a no-brainer that now is the time that we take this for conservation and be done with it. Thank you.
Further debate? Yes, ma'am.
Elaine Shovlin. Full disclosure, I am a member of the Real Estate and Open Space Committee. I am also a volunteer with Harwich Conservation Trust, and I am also a neighbor of this property. It is less than two blocks from my house. So I am interested in seeing it remain as open space, as conservation. But using the argument that this property could be used and developed, and 10 houses could be built on it, when we're talking about wastewater and sewer and all that, to spend this money on that property that is not in any imminent danger of being developed at all, when there are other properties that are currently being looked at by developers that would put 30, 35, or even 40 houses on them, and we seem to not have any concern about that being done. So using the argument about 10 houses being sewed just doesn't justify the expenditure of this money. Thank you.
Further debate? Mrs. Corbett.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, so she's made a motion to move the question. Is it seconded?
Seconded.
All right. It's a move and a seconded. It means to terminate debate on the motion that's pending. It's a non-debatable motion, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of terminating debate on the motion under Article 55, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
It got the necessary two-thirds, so we'll now move to a vote on the motion before the meeting. The motion before us, under Article 55, is that it be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. That $369,000 be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds, Open Space Reserve, $209,695.30, and then Undesignated Fund Balance, $159,304.70. So the total is still 369. It's just broken up into those two parts. All those in favor, the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
It needs a two-thirds vote to pass, so I'm going to take a standing count. If the tellers are still in the hall, they come forward. Who's counting this table? Okay. All right. You're just doing the floor here. Alan? Alan? Who's doing the table? Okay. Okay, we're ready to take your count. So all those in favor of the motion under Article 55 to accept and adopt, please rise and show your voter card.
37.
37. Mr. Evans.
54.
54. Mr. Brophy.
27.
47. All those opposed to the motion, those in opposition, please rise and raise your voter Ms. McCarty.
Eight.
Mr. Evans.
21.
21. Mr. Brophy.
Eight.
Eight. Mr. Thompson.
28.
28. 65. No, 161 to 65. Yeah. We all agree on that? Those in favor, 161. Those in opposition, 65. It did get the necessary two-thirds, and therefore, it passes. Article 56, see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, a perpetual conservation restriction pursuant to Chapter 184, Section 31 through 33, for open space watershed protection on certain parcels of land situated on Cornelius Pond off of 588 Queen Anne Road in Harwich, containing 15 acres, more or less. And then there's a long description, the property would be under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $200,000 be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds dash Open Space Reserve of $90,005 and $109,995.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $200,000 be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds dash Open Space Reserve of $90,005 and $109,995 from FY19 estimated annual revenue for this purpose.
Motion under Article 56 is accept and adopt. It proposes that 200,000 be transferred from CPA Act Funds Open Space Reserve of $90,005 and $109,995 from FY estimated annual revenue for this purpose. So the total, again, is $200,000. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. This has eminent domain in it, so this would also require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 57, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds, including $575,000 from CPA Funds unreserved, to implement a portion of Phase Two of the Town of Howard Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan approved by the Mass. Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, in a Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act certificate dated May 13, 2016. This consists of design, construction, remediation, including alum treatment of Hinckley Pond. All is more fully described in the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, together with costs incidental and related thereto, and appropriate from CPA Act Funds Undesignated Balance $75,000 to work with the Recreation and Youth Commission to improve and enhance public access area closest to the bike trail on Route 124 intersection, with the addition of a walkway and viewing platform, a bike kiosk, picnic tables, and an ADA-compatible path for a total request of $650,000. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $650,000 be transferred to Community Preservation Act Funds dash Undesignated Fund Balance of $199,052 and $450,948 from FY19 estimated annual revenue for this purpose.
So the motion under Article 57, accept and adopt, it's the same 650 as was in the article itself, and it's broken up into the same two pieces, $199,052 from Undesignated Fund Balance and $450,948 from FY19 estimated annual reserves for this purpose. Any debate? Mrs. Urbano.
I have a question about the Hinckleys Pond process. I know that in DVM study that they did, 2012, I believe, there were multiple ways that this could be handled, and we're being given the alum treatment, so I'd like to hear what the thought process was as to why alum was chosen above, say, a natural remedy.
Mr. Prophet, Natural Resources Director.
Yeah, good evening. Heinz Prof, Natural Resources Director for the town, but I'm also a resident of Sandwich.
Oh, well, any objection to hearing from Mr. Prophet? Hearing none, go ahead.
Thank you. For the last 20 years, working within the Natural Resources Department, Hinckley's, your largest freshwater pond that's actually entirely encapsulated within the boundary, has been looked at and water sampled, and has experienced algal blooms over these, over the years. Not every year, but they are that blue-green algae that can make the pond look pea-green, soup. And within the Water Quality Task Force, a study was funded by the town in the order of $30,000. That report was concluded in 2012, and among the recommendations within that, the primary recommendation by that study, which is online and on the town website, and also at the Brook Street Library, is that the pond be treated with alum. Alum may be something new to many of the people in the room. It's basically a combination of aluminum sulfate and sodium aluminate. It's a powder form that's used to bind with the phosphorus that's in the benthic layer of the pond. Alum's been applied to freshwater ponds and lakes for over 40 years. In fact, the Town of Howard and Brewster treated Long Pond back in 2007. The goal of that study was to look at everything that could be possible within the pond, but the primary recommendation from that study to address the phosphorus that is in Hinckley's Pond is to treat it with alum. It's something that lowers the total phosphorus, it increases the water clarity, and it brings relief from that cyanobacteria bloom, that blue-green algae that I explained. There's also a new study now, alum treatments to control internal phosphorus loading in lakes and ponds in Cape Cod, Massachusetts. Since 1995, 10 ponds have been treated with alum, and there is more to come in other This is something that, if the town addresses it, it's kind of, you know, you take a few pills, not the bottle. This is an application that's done by licensed people permitted through the town. It would still have to go through conservation's support and recommendations. There are other things that continue to go on within Hinckley's Pond. This would be looking at stormwater runoff, it'd be looking at things that are done around the edges of the pond with either the bog owners and water flowing in from Long Pond. This is how water makes its way from Herring River through Hinckley's Pond and into Long Pond. The herring migrate through there. So there's a lot of environmental importance with this. So this is what's been brought to you tonight, is this remediation for Hinckley's Pond.
Any further debate? Mrs. Urbano.
I was wondering if you have looked into any other, when you came up with alum, have you ever looked into, like, a pond reclamation, which actually restores the health of the pond rather than, I see alum as a treatment. It's been called by scientists sort of a clean shirt when you actually need a shower. So could you speak to that?
That along, and not just me, the Water Quality Task Force looked at that as long as, and then the Comprehensive Wastewater Management incorporates this, all that it was looked at, but the success by alum in other ponds and its ability to bind with that phosphorus and be applied in a safe manner was the primary antidote at this time to address Hinckley's. But those other ones, like aeration, like dredging, all these other things that possibly could have been done, this is the one, believe it or not, in terms of its bang for the buck, was the one that was recommended, especially based on the success right nearby in Long Pond.
So maybe in the future, a pond reclamation would be considered?
It will continue to be considered, because this is something that would most likely last 20 to 25 years.
Thank you.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Again, we're on Article 57, and the motion was accept and adopt. The amount was 650,000. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 58, I think this is the last of the CPC articles. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Act Funds Community Housing Reserve, $490,000, and $10,000 from Undesignated Reserve, for a total of $500,000 to fund the Howard Affordable Housing Trust to create and preserve affordable housing in the Town of Howard. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that $500,000 be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds dash Community Housing Reserve of $237,085 and $262,915 from FY19 estimated annual reserve, revenue for this purpose.
Okay, the motion under Article 58 is still accept and adopt with 500,000. It's broken down a little differently than in the article. It calls for $237,085, if you're keeping track, from the Housing Reserve, and then $262,915 from FY19 estimated annual revenues for this purpose. Any debate?
So I'm curious, is it?
Yes, Mr. Mondry.
Yes, sir. This apparently involves hiring a part-time staff member. What does that mean, by the way, part-time staff member?
Housing coordinator, you mean?
Yes.
How many hours? Mr. Clark, I think he means what constitutes part-time in terms of hours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It will be less than full-time. We're trying to get together with several towns to see if we can actually pool resources and hire a full-time person, probably under contract or a contract firm, so we can get services related to this. We're not trying to hire a new staffer, we're just trying to hire part-time in coordination with other towns, and most likely, we would pursue getting a contract service.
Okay, so this does not involve, then, all the accrual of benefits and everything else that would add to that expense?
That's what we're attempting to avoid.
Thank you.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for, to vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 59, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds of some of $20,000 to help defray the expenses of the Chase Library and the Howard Port Library. Set funds to be expended under the direction of the Chase Library and Howard Port Library trustees, and act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and that $20,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article 59 is accept and adopt. The sum is $20,000 to be transferred from free cash. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 60, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money for the Howard Chamber of Commerce to promote the town, its businesses, and to advance economic development initiatives, and for and with the Town of Howard. Set monies to be used to manage and fulfill year-round visitor resident business information services, promote and market the town, generate and initiate materials and activities, and encourage the establishment growth and sustainability of businesses in Howard, and implement economic development objectives and activities. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and that $30,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article 60 is accept and adopt. The sum is 30,000. It's proposed to be transferred from free cash. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The motion carries. Article 61, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to supplement the Massachusetts Cultural Council annual allocation for grant awards to artists, performers, interpretive scientists who bring events to local venues, which enhance the cultural experience of Howard citizens of all ages. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and that $3,600 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's are made under Article 61, accept and adopt. The sum is $3,600. It's proposed to be taken from free cash. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. 62, see if the town will vote to direct the Board of Selectmen to approve and execute an intermunicipal agreement, IMA, with the towns of Chatham, Brewster, and Orleans, relative to the Pleasant Bay watershed permit, to be requested from the Mass DEP to facilitate removal of excess nitrogen loads to Pleasant Bay. Execution of the IMA shall be contingent upon and subject to the satisfactory completion and acceptance by the Board of Selectmen of the Pleasant Bay Targeted Watershed Management Plan, Watershed Permit Terms and Conditions, and final proposed intermunicipal agreement. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
So moving seconded, Article 62, be accepted and adopted as printed. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The motion carries. Article 63, another one on Pleasant Bay, to see if the town will vote to adopt the 2018 Pleasant Bay Resource Management Plan update, developed in accordance with the Pleasant Bay Resource Management Plan adopted by the town in 1998, updated in '03, '08, and '13, and the memorandum of agreement with the Town of Orleans, Chatham, and Brewster originally authorized by the town in '98 and reauthorized in '03, '08, and '13, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a successor memorandum of agreement as amended by the Board of Selectmen with one or more of the aforementioned towns for the purpose of continuing the Pleasant Bay Resource Management Alliance, implement the plan, and plan updates, and act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
63 has been moved as accepted, to accept and adopt as printed in the warrant. Any debate on that one? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article 64, this is revolving funds. If you recall at the beginning of the meeting, I indicated I would not be reading the entire chart. See if the town will vote to set the spending limits for various revolving funds that have been authorized pursuant to Section 8.1 of the Town Code, and act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted in accordance with the chart published in the warrant, except for the cemetery fund will be $70,000 instead of the $100,000.
Okay, the motion under Article 64 is accept and adopt in accordance with the chart that's in your warrant, with one exception, cemetery fund, the motion indicates that the $100,000 would be stricken, and $70,000 would be inserted in place thereof. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put that motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 65, to see if the town will accept General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 15B, which allows the town to establish by vote of a tax title collection revolving fund, effective FY19, to offset expenses incurred in connection with a tax title or tax title foreclosure, including but not limited to searching and examining titles, mailing, publishing, or advertising notices or documents, petitioning the land court, serving court filings and documents, and paying legal fees. Said revolving fund shall be under the control of the treasurer collector. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, provided that the maximum amount authorized to be expended from the revolving account shall not exceed $36,000 in any fiscal year.
So the motion under Article 65 is accept and adopt. It also includes a maximum amount authorized to be expended from the account in any one year of $36,000. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article 66, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to be added to the stabilization fund, and act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and that $630,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
The motion under Article 66 is accept and adopt. The figure is 630,000 to be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Any debate? Looks like you're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 67, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to be added to the OPEB trust fund, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and that $700,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
The motion under Article 67 is accept and adopt. The sum is 700,000 to be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Any debate? All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 68, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to pay unpaid bills of prior years, as provided for in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 64, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and the sum of $10,500 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
The motion under Article 68 is accept and adopt as printed in the warrant. The sum is $10,500 be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Any debate? Unpaid bills requires a four-fifths majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Before I get to Article 69, I have one appointment to the Finance Committee, Dana DeCosta. I appoint Mr. DeCosta to a three-year term expiring June 30, 2021. I'd also like to take a moment and thank the Finance Committee for their efforts this When we were voting for the salaries for elected officials, it was pointed out by a member of the Finance Committee that they make more money than anybody, which, of course, they don't. They volunteer their time, and I appreciate if you give them a round of applause for all their work. So we've now arrived at the last article in the warrant.
Point of order?
What's your point of order?
We'd like to reconsider an article.
Which article?
The chart, six changes.
What's the reconsideration?
Um, the fourth section, the fourth line, down to $70,000, so maybe I can reconsider in order to keep it at $100,000.
Okay. Hold on one second.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so Mr. DeCosta has risen for the purpose of making a motion to reconsider the action we just took under Article 66. I'm sorry, it's 64. That was the revolving fund?
Yes.
Okay. And the action that we took was to accept and adopt as printed in the warrant with one exception, cemeteries, we reduced it from $100,000 to $70,000. So first, we've got to try and get the motion back on the floor. He's brought a motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. That requires a three-fourths majority to pass, but it is debatable, so, Mr. DeCosta, I'll recognize you for debate for the purposes of the motion to reconsider.
Turns out the Board of Selectmen had not actually voted that one change, so we want to read and state the article to vote it again as printed in the warrant.
Any further debate on this motion to reconsider? Looks like you're ready to vote on that. That requires a three-fourths majority to pass. All those in favor of reconsidering the action taken under Article 64, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. I'm going to have to take a standing count unless it's a unanimous vote, so I'll try it one more time, because it does need a three-fourths. All those in favor of reconsidering, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. So we'll now go to Article 64 again, and I'll recognize Mr. DeCosta for the purpose of making a motion.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted in accordance with the chart published in the warrant.
Second.
The motion offered under Article 64 is that the article be accepted and adopted in accordance with the chart published in the warrant. In other words, just as printed in the warrant is the proposal. Debate on the main motion. Yes, ma'am.
Christine Odigaga, 14 Rainbow Way. I wonder how these limits are set, and if spending limit means that's the only money they can expend, or if it's the only money from this particular fund, specifically the wetlands line item, row.
You want to respond to that, Chris?
Mr. Clark. So the question is, how are these spending limits set under the fifth column, and are these the only funds that can be spent for these purposes? Or are these just the funds that come out of these particular accounts? Mr. Clark.
So we set the limits based upon the anticipated revenue going in. These are all revenues that are derived by fees related to the specific purpose, and once those fees hit that number, then we have to stop, and those fees can only be expended for that purpose in which the funds went into, the fees went into.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
I can try.
All right, hold on, I'll just read it.
So actually, let me, I will restate it. This is a revenue account that is derived by specific fees. We anticipate how many fees or how much we're going to collect in that certain category. So let's just say cemeteries. We anticipate that we're going to collect $100,000. We set the limit at $100,000. By law, fees for the sale of cemetery lots and so forth would go into that fund up to $100,000, and they could only be spent on that purpose in which it's identified in the article for expenditure.
The fourth column is the purpose.
Right.
That's the sole purpose.
Okay.
And the fifth column is the limit.
So with respect to conservation, they get state mandated filing fees, but then there's also local filing fees. So would this $6,000 be a limit on spending of local fees or of any notice of intent fees?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
Specifically in this is if someone submits an application before the Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Commission does not believe they have the in-house expertise to be able to review that plan, this gives them the ability to hire an outside consultant at the expense of the applicant. So the applicant pays, we contract with the consultant, and then the consultant is paid for out of this fund. So the taxpayers aren't subsidizing that additional expert review.
I get that. I'm just questioning whether $6,000 is enough. If the town issued an order that it had to defend in court, I mean, we see in this other article, legal fees can be very expensive. So I'm just wondering why the limit was set at $6,000.
I think this has been, through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
This has been based upon past practice, so this has been the practice that we've had that level, and it has been adequate for several years.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're still on Article 64. The motion is accept and adopt in accordance with the chart now published in your warrant. Any further debate? Okay, looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 64, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. So we'll now return to our last article in the warrant. I know I have a number of people who want to get up on this, I think. I see Mr. Houston waiting. To see what action the town will take in regard to the herring fisheries and to act fully thereon. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amherst?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted.
We're going to approve it, and it's going to be adopted. We all want to go home, but would somebody please tell me?
Excuse me, sir, you haven't been recognized. You just don't start speaking. You've got to be recognized.
Okay.
So, let me get a motion on the floor. The motion under Article 69 is to be accepted and adopted. I recognize Mr. Houston for the purposes of debate.
Thank you. I stand to just make sure that we all think of Marge Marion and the fish are running, and I thought I would briefly mention, as I have done in the past, that we have dozens of volunteers from the community currently doing the herring census through the good offices of the Conservation Trust and the Natural Resources. That includes a record 30 students from Monomoy Regional High School going out once a week to count fish for 10 minutes at the fish ladder, and if you've been over near the flume, the electronic counter is back in action, and I think the most recent totals are upwards of 300 to 400,000 fish, so.
Good, okay. Mark, do you have anything further you want to add on this, or? No, okay. Mr. Mondry, do you have anything to add?
Just a point of information from a previous article. I don't know what the hell OPED means. In the future, could we please spell out this trust fund? You describe what NRPFI is, I can understand that. We all want to go home, we vote on things fast. I would like to know what OPED, which we just voted, what is it?
I'll let Mr. Clark respond to that.
Other post-employment benefits. Basically, what it is, is health insurance for retirees.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 69? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting.
I move to resolve the 2008 annual town meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the annual town meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Anyone opposed may remain. Meeting's adjourned. Thanks so much for hanging in there.
10 o'clock.